This is Mr. Kirk Kusick, who is our, one of our out-of-the-city-limits representatives. He's been taking classes at Fort Hays State and he is now done with his semester and able to join us, so he's one of our two out-of-city representatives.
Welcome Kirk.
You're welcome.
Been awhile.
Welcome Kirk.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Just because he said...
What'd you say, out of our area? A long ways out of our city.
Yeah, he's a little out of reach there.
He's not like he's out of our area.
That's what I'm saying.
Can we change the name tag?
He misses him here too. That doesn't mean he has to sit outside the city limits, it's just...
With your permission Ken, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order while you're finishing up some last minute things. First item of business will be the approval of the summary minutes of the May 6 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the May 6 regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's passed. Item number two. Find an item number two. Application CU-11-1A filed by Warren Ettinger on behalf of George Stein requesting approval of a conditional use permit amendment to allow construction of additional mini warehouses in a C5 service commercial district on properly, property legally described as all of lots 10 and 11 less the south seven feet thereof and lot 12 less the south, south seven feet of the west seven feet thereof in block 1 of the Holiday addition of the city of Salinas Lane County, Kansas, addressed 440 South Clark.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. This particular application is an extension from a May 6 hearing item that we had during that May 6 meeting. It was extended to today so that further research and verification could be done on the survey of the property to make sure that we have the proper boundaries of the lot that we're dealing with. And since that time confirmation has been obtained with work between the surveyor and the city surveyor in collaboration to come up with the survey that's seen on the screen and also in your packet. Since the May 6 meeting, we've also received a revised site plan from the, from the architect. If you'll remember, the previous site plan had a shared access easement on the west side that has been removed and is now a voluntary setback for building permit purposes with all of the access to the site being internal on the existing drive off of Holiday to the, on the existing property as well as in a Phase 2, there's a proposed second entrance as well. So today, we are focused on both Phase 1 and Phase 2, with Phase 1 being the first project and Phase 2 to come at a later date. So in looking at Phase 1, you've got an existing building that is 15 feet by 150 and the applicant is proposing to add 20 feet to the west so that it would essentially be an addition of 20 feet by 150 feet to make a unified building of 35 feet wide and 150 feet deep. In addition to that building, the applicant is also proposing another building here along the west side of this access aisle seen on the site plan with another tail that is, I believe it's eight feet wide by 60 feet long that would have some smaller units in it. So that would be Phase 1. And then Phase 2 would have a additional entrance off of Holiday and would essentially circle around with interior access to both the outer buildings that are being proposed and a center building as well. All of the access aisles are 25 feet wide, which is the minimum requirement for storage units, mini storage units with the exception of the aisle that is to the south of the center building in Phase 2. So that gives you a quick background of where we are at this point in time. The proposed lot that we're dealing with is 24,530 square feet, which when you add it to the existing lot that the applicant, Mr. Stein, has, the total lot area would then become 56,634 square feet. The lot coverage of Phase 1 would have 6,180 square feet of building area, which would equate to 25.2 square feet just in this new area that's the subject of this conditional use permit. And Phase 2 would have an additional 21.7 square feet or 5,330 square feet of building area, which would come out to 46.9 percent lot coverage for the new Phase 1 and Phase 2 combination. When you take the total campus together and aggregate it, it sums up to a lot coverage of 37.5 percent with 21,280 square feet of building area. And again, the total lot area would then be 56,634 square feet. So in looking at all of the zoning regulation and bulk regulation requirements, staff does not see any issues with the site plan that's proposed for either Phase 1 or Phase 2 nor the total buildout of the entire campus if you were to approve the conditional use permit as it's proposed. The biggest issue and the only issue that we really see is the requirement of having a 25-foot driving aisle for mini storage facilities along the south side of the center building in Phase 2. And as point of explanation, on that 25-foot driving aisle, that is a result of meetings between fire department staff and planning staff many years ago. And that determination was created with in mind that you need to have 20 feet of open space for any sort of emergency apparatus. And then also, usually, we don't have off-street parking and we don't require off-street parking for mini storage facilities if they don't have an office area. And the reason behind that is because usually how people use it is if you rent a unit, say right where my pointer is on the screen, you're gonna drive in, you're gonna park in front of your unit, you're gonna get out, load, unload, whatever you need to. Well, having 25 feet gives you enough area for another vehicle to either go around you or come and pass you through the opposite direction. So the purpose of the 25 feet is twofold. One, to allow emergency access to move freely inside the compound if they need to. And then also have enough space for the off-street parking that otherwise would be required. But in this case, that access aisle is wide enough where it counts as both off-street parking and driving access. Landscaping that's required for this particular property is going to be 15 square feet per lineal foot of street frontage. And because this would eventually become part of a unified property or campus that would be on a corner lot, there is a 30 percent reduction. So as it turns out, the total combined front yard landscaping that's going to be required for the entire campus is 5,502 square feet with the addition of these two islands and what is to remain existing, the proposed plan that you see in front of you will come out to 6,625 square feet, which exceeds the minimum requirements for front yard landscaping. So in looking at the welfare and convenience of the public, staff and the applicant are both in agreement that the facility could provide and contribute to the convenience of the public by adding additional storage space in an area that's easily accessible from a nearby arterial, a nearby arterial being Broadway Boulevard. And it also puts a currently vacant property into productive use and adds to an already successful business in the area. In looking at the injury to the surrounding property and whether or not the proposed conditional use would dominate the neighborhood, the area is already primarily commercial in its nature with, one, the existing mini storage facility that we're attempting to add on to, what the applicant is proposing to add on to. And then also another RV recreational mini storage that would, that's to the south of here. And the scene on the screen, this is the rooftop of the mini storage facility to the south that houses RV units. So the area already has quite a few, or at least two, rather decently sized mini storage units. And all of the properties on the south side of Holiday and on the west side of Clark are all commercial in nature. So we aren't, we don't perceive this as being a domination of the neighborhood or drastic change. The existing facility already acts as a buffer, or at least is the most adjacent affected property to the residential properties that are along the east side of Clark Street there. The utilities are adequate. There's a six-inch water line and there are sanitary sewer line and drainage sewer lines as well, or storm sewer, sewer lines as well. And the proposed conditional use facility has minimal utility requirements because there are no restrooms. The only water that's really needed is to irrigate the landscaping or to suppress any fires that may occur. And there are fire hydrants in the area. So utilities, we believe, are more than adequate for the proposed use that the applicant is proposing. And looking at the traffic and access, again, the only concern that staff has on the traffic and access is that south, or that driving out to the south of the center building in Phase 2 that would need to be widened. It's currently 20 feet as proposed and it would be, need to be widened to 25 in order to meet those minimum dimensional requirements. The front yard paving area is not to exceed 60 percent. And as we've calculated it with the combined frontages of Holiday and Clark, the applicant at the total buildout of both the, with the existing property and facility combined with what's being proposed in Phase 1 and 2 would have a paving coverage of 50.2 percent, which is under the 60 percent that's allowed. Now, most of the pavement area would be on Holiday as Clark is primarily landscaped as you can see on the site plan. And looking at conformance with the master plan, the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan shows the area being a neighborhood center along the Broadway corridor with retail and service type uses being the primary and principal uses in the neighborhood center district. And staff didn't see any major issues with how that would conform to what the comprehensive plan has as it's currently zone C5 and this use is a conditional use permit option in the C5 district. Staff does have eight separate findings that we see as being appropriate for approving the conditional use permit as it's requested. And I'll just read through them quickly here. Okay, well, Dean said I pretty much just did in my explanation, so they're there for your reference. We don't need to go through them in any more detail. The alternatives, there are four alternatives with, you could approve the conditional use permit and you can approve it with any conditions or revisions that you would like. In either of those two options, staff would note that the city commission must approve the vacation of the utility easement along the south seventh, or along the south seven feet of Lot 12 and the north seven feet of Lot 15 before a building permit can be issued. That'll be something that'll be important to note. And we would also recommend a few conditions of approval that are listed in the report. There are six of them that you could read through and if you are, if they are acceptable to you, you could add them to any motions for approval if that is your wish. So with that, I think staff will take any questions that you may have of the report and the project.
Any questions for staff? Just one. Applicants aware of these six recommendations and are agreeable with those?
That'll be for the applicant, we haven't talked to the applicant.
We haven't talked about it. Okay, thank you. Anybody else for staff? Mr. Stein?
Do you think the city commission wouldn't approve the vacation of the utility easement?
Do we think they would?
Yeah, are there any problems with?
At this point in time, Dean will update you a little further, but at this time, what I can tell you is that the dark shaded areas that you see on the screen have already been vacated. What we are currently requesting is two separate vacations, one being on the south seven feet of Lot 12 that's shaded here on the north side and the other being the north seven feet of Lot 15. And I'll let Dean expand on that.
To update you where we are, the intention was that last night at a public hearing, that the vacation of the, this north piece here would have been considered, but we determined at the time that vacating that would not have completed the job or allowed the construction to actually move forward. So we have identified that Mr. Stein needs to amend his request and also to request the vacation of this. What has occurred and the reason this was only vacated to this point was that there was overhead electric lines that were in here that were owned by Westar and they asked that the, those easements be retained. Then they subsequently removed their facilities from those easements. And for the benefit of Mr. Stein and Mr. Ettinger, the one idea that, that we have that we're not certain will be received by the city commission, but they have the authority to allow the building construction to commence while the easements are still there. And what we would do is request something in writing from Westar saying that they've eliminated all their facilities there and that they don't have any objection to construction occurring there pending the vacation of the easements. But because of notice and review requirements, we won't have a final answer on that till 7th of July when the city commission can take that up. But given the fact that facilities have been abandoned in these locations and there's nothing there, now we would anticipate that that would be approved by the city commission. It's just that the request that was filed did not include this and this has been pieced together over time. And so as it, as the vacations occur in sequence, that portion got missed and now needs to be included. But we don't anticipate that utilities will object and if they don't object, then the city commission is not going to have difficulty doing that third vacation.
Can we hear from Mr. Stein or Mr. Ettinger?
Good afternoon. My name is Warren Ettinger. My business address is 631 East Crawford, Suite 211, and I'm representing George Stein for this project. I don't think that we have a whole lot to add to the staff's description of the project. I think they were pretty thorough with that. The delay with vacating the easement, if we can proceed with a building permit, will not have a drastic impact because by the time the building is delivered, that 30-day period will probably expire and we'll have the easement cleared, so that should be okay. I do want to request that when you consider the alternative actions, we don't object to the 25-foot width for the access aisle around the end of the building. But we prefer not to have items 2 through 6 included in the conditional use because those are all building permit and city engineering issues that are resolved during that process, during the permit process. So it's redundant to do it now and we'll get a building permit based on satisfactorily addressing those items.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Ettinger?
I have a question.
Sure.
Are the facilities that are currently there, are they full?
Are units full?
Not 100 percent.
I don't think, when you look at a facility like that, you're ever going to find it 100 percent full. There's always some churn in it, but it's full enough that he needs to add on to it. Typically, these are based on a market study of what's currently being rented and the size of the units. If you'll note on the site plan, when we show a building outline, we request the ability to adjust the divisions inside of that because at the time of construction, the need may change from a 10-foot wide unit to a 15-foot wide. The outside of the building doesn't change, but the interior may based on what the market need is at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Ettinger, about the comment of the 2 through 6, if I heard you right, about the conditions. I was, wanted some clarification from staff. I'm not, I'm not clear about, can these be simply ignored and handled in the building permit process, which is the impression I get?
They're not ignored, that's part of the building permit review.
Yes.
And the permit is not issued until those are, I mean, it's, every project has to deal with those items, whether they're on
Right.
A conditional use list or not. Most projects don't have a conditional use
Right.
List attached to it, and so we have to go through those anyway. It's just a standard part of submitting a project.
So I guess then my question to you, Mr. Ettinger, would be, is there any obstruction in having these conditions attached if that's gonna happen anyway?
No, except that I think you're taking on, for instance, with the drainage, that's an engineering issue. They will do the review on it and determine whether it's satisfactory or not. My, my concern would be if it's attached to this, then we have a dual review and instead of the people that are intended to look at it, maybe we've got another set of staff that's looking at it.
Okay.
Yes, our response
Thank you, Mr. Ettinger.
Our response would be that, for instance, condition number 6 is what gives the city engineering staff the authority to look at that and to ensure that that occurs. If you look at condition number 5, if that were eliminated, it would give discretion essentially to deviate from or change what was presented to you today. And that is a standard requirement of conditional use permits that is different than a building permit. And so the, the difference between a conditional use permit and a building permit is that a conditional use permit has a public hearing, which we're having today. The neighbors have an opportunity to come and attend and see what the plans are and that neighbors can have the expectation that the plans that have been reviewed and approved by the planning commission is what gets built. And so the, the difference is that if somebody submits a building permit and it has no public hearing, it has no planning commission review, and they say, well, wait a minute, we've changed our mind, we want to submit a new building permit plan that's substantially different, they can do that because they haven't bound themselves or presented publicly any, any particular plan. But if, if you were to delete condition number 5 today, or, or basically any of these conditions, they are, are simply reinforcements and assurances to you, the planning commission, that these items will be taken care of in this fashion. But if you were to delete condition number 5, then we wouldn't have any reason to be here today or for you to be planning commissioners because part of your job as planning commissioners is to review this plan and decide whether it, it fits well with this site and the surroundings. And then our job as staff is to make sure that what gets built there conforms to the plans that were presented to you today.
Right.
So we don't, these conditions 2 through 6 exactly replicate the conditions that you attach to approval of the development right here. And so all we did was say this, this is an amendment of this, so we think the conditions that, that planning commission attached to this should carry over to this. So there, there's nothing there that is new or different than what was approved as conditions for, by the planning commission there. So we're a little at a loss of how to respond to that because condition number 5, that development and use of the site shall substantially conform to the site plan approved by the planning commission is, is the entire basis of why we're here this afternoon.
Thank you. I think, I think that helps us understand both sides of it.
I don't have an objection to, to that being added to it, but I do want it to be clear that every building permit that goes out has a set of special conditions that's attached to it. What, the first special condition is that there shall be no deviation from the plan, including the site plan, without prior approval of it. And so it would always go back through city staff, all city staff, if there's a change in it. So it's, my, my point is just it's redundant language. It, it'll go back through planning whether we make a change or not, so you can include it, doesn't matter.
Agreed.
Has the same effect.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to give us any information about this? Seeing none, let's bring back here to the commission for discussion and possible action.
I spent years working for the Department of Redundancy Department, so I don't have a whole lot of trouble with, with the six conditions. I would make a motion that the application CU-11-1A be approved based upon staff, the findings of the staff 1 through 8 and that staff recommendations 1 and 5 receive special attention and that 2, 3, 4, and 6 be included for their reinforcement of city general building and development policy.
You have, you tripled up the redundancy again.
I, I didn't say a thing at the last meeting, so...
Is there a second? And, and to be easy on Chris, I'll just second that.
Did I hear a second? Thank you. We have a motion. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have some other matters?
For other matters, for Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Baxa, and Mr. Storey, a reminder that at the next meeting on the 17th, we'll be having a meeting of the Parking Lot Surfacing Subcommittee and going that into a little more detail. Our, our plan for the 4 o'clock regular meeting is just to have a brief steady session on another issue that has hit our plate that is probably going to require some tweaking or amendments of our wireless communication facility ordinance, which I, I can say has been widely imitated throughout the, the state of Kansas. However, the one thing I did not anticipate that we're now getting requests for, and we'll, we'll explain it a little more detail at your next meeting, is what's called distributed antenna systems. And as, as we've talked to you about cell towers and data usage and all this, we, we have the two Cs of coverage and capacity. And so cell towers have generally handled the coverage issue, which is to get service geographically distributed around the community. But as smartphones and other data-consuming devices need more capacity, the latest innovation is attempts to use streetlights, utility poles, things that are in the public right-of-way as, as points for supporting antennas. The, what we don't have is we don't have anything that says how tall, you know, if I add an antenna to a utility pole, how tall can I go? Can I do it in a residential setting or only in commercial settings? There are boxes, utility boxes that are associated with those and Westar will allow the antennas, but they won't allow the boxes to be mounted to the pole, which then puts the boxes down at, at the ground somewhere. And so what, what we're finding ourselves is there's more and more and more entities that are trying to use the streetscape or the public right-of-way as a conduit for, for connecting fiber optics and other things. And so we are currently working on some things in that area, but in order to also establish what the ground rules are there, cities do have the authority to regulate the aesthetics of these things, but we're gonna need some guidance from you on what we're, how... where, how, how many. I had a meeting yesterday where somebody said they'd already identified 30 sites in Salina as potential. Well, we don't, we don't even have that many towers, although I do have, on my desk right now, I have three antenna co-locations for adding more antennas to existing towers. So, our, our appetite for data seems to be endless, and so we will, we will use our session on the 17th, the regular session for that. And then on July 1st, we'll want to have you all check your travel calendars and all that to see if we can have a, a quorum there, but that is our target for bringing back consideration, text amendments that relate to vapor lounges and hookah lounges, as we discussed at our previous meeting. And then we also have a, a site plan request for approval for a Rib Crib Restaurant, which would be located north of Dymaru Steakhouse out in front of Loews. So, we'll be focusing before the regular meeting on off-street parking surfacing with Mr. Kennedy and Story and Baxa, and then we'll have our regular meeting. We'll talk about distributive antenna systems, and then hopefully July 1st, have something for you to respond to with specifics on hookah and vapor lounges and with Rib Crib.
I wanted to just mention on, in regard to the wireless communications issue, it's very interesting to me that we're looking at that, and I think, an important subject. An acquaintance of mine who has access to some of this information, and I think I got this right, so I'm, this is my loose translation, I may be incorrect about this, but those 30 sites that they've identified as possible locations now, they anticipate would expand to 60 or even 90 in the future. At least, they're looking at the capacity of these smaller capacity distribution units to double and even triple in the future. So, it's kind of
And it has to do with, before, it was important to be really high, and then it became height is still important because line of sight is there, but height was less important than being more closely together. And now, we've gone from 200-foot towers to 100-foot towers to 35-foot power poles or streetlights. And, you know, and, and doing that, we just want to, we're, we're taking the slow, let's make sure we understand what we're doing, approach. And so, one aspect will be on the, treating them as a franchise, just like AT&amp;T or, or Westar or Kansas Gas. And then the other aspect that you'll be involved with would be the aesthetics of, of where, how tall, what should it look like, where do the boxes go, that type of thing, which we'll be seeking your feedback. So
We can add a cost, and they could finance those specials.
That's a possibility. One other thing we wanted to share is just something that we became aware of, and it's maybe what Mr. Welsh is dealing with today, but the, the post office recently reinforced something that has been a, a postal, a trend that they have not enforced strictly in, in the city of Salina. But basically, the, first, we had mailboxes on the house and house-to-house delivery, then mailboxes at the street, and now their, their rule of thumb for new subdivisions is the community mailbox. And so, the, the cluster or whatever, and so Mr. Welsh has a 27-lot subdivision that he's now needing to come up with a 27-unit community post box for, and that as we look at subdivision plats and those types of things, that's something that we need to, to, to think about and, and find the appropriate spot for, or take that into account as we're looking at initial layout, is, is that the days of having the mailbox out at the street is probably gone, and, and all future development, so we'll have some with at-home mailboxes, mailboxes at the street, and then as future develop. We do have a few community mailboxes, but most of our newer subdivisions have still had curbside mailboxes. But it, based on conversations with the new postmaster, that's a thing in the past. So, unless you have any questions for us, I think that would cover it for today.
Anybody else?
We're adjourned.
Okay.
Another cluster box.